Thank you for coming. I've been informed that a quorum is present, so the meeting will come to order. At this time, I would ask the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen to lead us in the Plaid of Deeds. Alright, so again, obviously, we have the electronic voting, again, as everybody knows. So, one for yes, two for no. We'll go over that each time. I'll let you know before we close the voting. And, obviously, if this amendment changes, that usually takes a little bit of time to enter that into the system. We'll do that. As in the past, as I mentioned, there are seven speakers permitted for and against. And they will have two minutes to speak. The presenter of the article or motion will have five minutes to do that. Anyone who is a registered voter can speak and make motions. Anyone who is a taxpayer can speak. And anyone else can speak at the discretion of the meeting. Okay? Alright, having been informed that the warrant has been posted and returned promptly, I'll ask the town vote to come on.
In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required under record to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Webster for set while qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in Lawland High School Auditorium, 52 Actuary, in Central, Atlanta, D. B.
We have a motion and a second. It's not going to be by electronic vote. We're just going to do by voice vote. All those in favor of passing over?
Aye.
Now, you, all those opposed, it's unanimous vote. Alright. So, let's do the test vote first. Will the Red Sox win the World Series?
Yes.
One for yes and two for no.
The polls are open.
Again, if you press it and it doesn't go green, then it's not working. Once it's green, you can press it as many times as you want. It's only the last vote before we close. It's recorded. Alright, we'll close the polls. Seventy-one percent, twenty-nine percent. We'll see how accurate we are. Alright. Article one, to hear and act upon the report and recommendations of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee or to take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as read.
Have a motion and a second to approve the article as read and discussion. Hearing no discussion, we will open the polls.
They're open.
They are open. Alright, we will close the polls. Seventy-seven to two, the article passes. Article two is a four-fifths required vote to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the town administrator unpaid bills account for the purposes of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, before I make a motion, these are the prior year bills that need to be paid for a total of eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. So, I move that the town vote to transfer the following funds to pay for the prior fiscal year bills.
Have a second?
Sir?
Oh, second. Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So, the Finance Committee voted to recommend this motion. For some reason, this mic isn't functioning, but that was what he just conveyed to me. The Finance Committee voted to recommend this article. Any further discussion? Alright. No further discussion being heard. We will again open the polls. This is a four-fifths required vote. Alright, we will close the polls. Ninety-seven percent to three, so it'll pass, but the numbers are eighty-seven to three. Article three, this is also a four-fifths required vote. See if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the sewer unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereon.
Again, a brief explanation. These are the prior year bills for a total of four hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-three cents. So, I move that the town vote to transfer the following funds to pay for the prior fiscal year bills.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, the earlier today the Finance Committee voted to recommend this motion, this article?
Any additional discussion? Alright, hearing no additional discussion, we will again open up the polls. Again, this is a four-fifths required vote. Polls are... Not yet open.
Now they're open.
Now they're open. Polls are open. Alright, we will close the polls. Ninety-seven percent to three again, three percent, which is eighty-three to three. The article passes. Article four, also a four-fifths required vote to see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the water unpaid bills account for the purpose of funding the payment of prior year's unpaid invoices or take any action thereon.
There's one prior year bill that was not paid of fifty dollars. I might go back. So, I move that the town vote to transfer the following funds to pay for the prior fiscal year bills.
I agree with the number.
Fifty dollars.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, earlier today the Finance-
Hold on, I'm sorry. I didn't, I don't think I asked for a vote yet. I mean, did anybody make a motion to approve?
I got a motion and a second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Alright, now, go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, earlier today the Finance Committee voted to recommend this article?
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we will again take a vote. It's a four-fifths required vote. Are the polls open? They are. Alright, we will close the polls. Ninety-five to five, which is seventy-eight to four, the article passes. Article five, see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to adjust the FY nineteen operating budget or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, there is no need to adjust the operating budget at this time, so I move that the town pass over this article.
I agree.
Does it pass over for more information or just pass over?
Just pass over.
Just pass over. Have a motion and a second to pass over. Any additional discussion? Alright, this is just a simple majority vote. We will open the polls. They are open. Alright, we will close the polls. Eighty-three to one, the article passes. I'm sorry, the article is passed over. Article six, to see if the town will vote to supplement each prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money to pay costs of capital projects to provide that in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of General Laws, the premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, lest any such premium apply to the payments of the costs of insurance of such bonds and notes, may be applied to pay project costs and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, this may sound a little familiar because we passed this article in May. So, I apologize, but I move that we pass over this article.
Have a motion and a second to pass over the article. Any discussion? Alright, hearing no discussion, we will open the polls. And they are...
They're open.
They're open. Again, simple majority. Okay, we will close the polls. Eighty-four to one, the article is passed over. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter thirty-two, Section twenty, subsection six relative to the retirement board members' compensation or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I would allow the county attorney, who is the sponsor of this article, to speak out.
Good evening, everybody. This started out when I just started taking, as a town councilman and ex-officio member for the retirement board in April. As I started looking into some of the issues, this started out as a technical correction, just an update with the current law. However, as a result, it would allow the retirement board to increase their stipend if they so voted, up to forty-five hundred dollars. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-two, Section twenty, subsection six, and allow the retirement board to increase their annual stipend from three thousand up to a maximum of forty-five hundred dollars.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, I just take the mic? Oh, don't take it. Just use it.
Early, oh, twenty-two Spring Street. I just a question on where is the funds for this salary coming out? Is it retirement board? Is it the town?
Well, it... It's from the retirement, it's from the retirement system. However, part of that probably would come eventually from the town or could come from the town as part of the contribution, the assessment, that the town pays.
Like, to what extent did the town have that figure?
If, well, if each member, if it was voted to increase each member by the fifteen hundred dollars, seventy-five times fifteen hundred, so, you know, seventy-five hundred dollars if it was so voted.
From the town?
Yeah. You know, one of the things I would point out, that the three thousand dollar stipend started in July two thousand and five, which would be fiscal year two thousand and six. Had a two percent increase been done every year since, the stipen, if it could have been and had been done, it would be about, the stipen would be about thirty-two hundred dollars. And if a three percent raise had been authorized each year, the current stipen would be about forty-four hundred dollars. So, it sounds like, it may sound like a steep increase, but if you go back to the first year, it's really, you know, about three percent. And it is capped until whenever Mass. General Law, if ever, is changed again. So, you know, one of the reasons I looked into this was for me personally, I take the fiduciary responsibility as being a retirement system member very seriously. I put a lot of time and effort in to each board meeting. And I just felt that it seemed like it was time. I mean, legislature passed it back in two thousand and twelve, and so it's something I feel strongly about. I don't know, the board itself, the town board itself, we have not discussed this. I don't know what the other members feel. But I just wanted to make this available to the town.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I think on law, both Clay and Ab, is the town board consistent about town employees?
I'm sorry, you quite get it.
The town board, is it consist of town employees?
Uh, there's two, myself and Bob Craver.
When are the meetings taken place?
Uh, usually the second Wednesday of every month.
During the workday?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Alright, hearing no further discussion, we will open the polls. And they are...
Sorry, they're so close.
Not yet open.
Alright, they're open now.
Okay, they are now open. One for yes, two for no. Simple majority vote. Alright, we will close the polls. Twenty-nine to sixty-two, the article fails. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from any available funds in the treasury a sum sufficient to the highway roof improvement capital account or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, a brief explanation. So, at our Maytown meeting, we approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for repairs to the highway garage room. We had our engineer look at it, and he recommended an alternative option to the one that we were considering in May. So, we requested bids for that alternative option. They came back last week, and they were much more than we expected and much more than we're willing to pay. So, I'm going to recommend that we pass over this article, and we're going to go back and look at our first alternative and fund it from the previous amount that was approved in May. So, with that, I move that the town pass over.
Have a motion and a second to pass over your articles. Article eight, it's a simple majority vote. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, we will open the polls. They are open. We will close the polls. Eighty-two to three, the article is passed over. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the following cable access budget in accordance with General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F, in three quarters, or take any action thereon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the article as read.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will open up the polls. It's a simple majority vote.
They're open.
They have, the polls are open. Alright, we will close the polls. Sixty-two to twenty-two, the article passes. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey to public utilities such easements in town property presently held in the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes as in the board's opinion are deemed necessary or appropriate in the best interest of the town and upon such terms as the board deems appropriate in assigning deeds or other instruments required to make such conveyances or taking any action thereon.
Hey, there's an explanation. That was kind of confusing language, but in order for an easement to be granted on town land, that has to be approved by town meeting normally. That could, has a potential of backing up a project if we have to wait almost six months for another town meeting. So, instead of having town meeting approve any easements on town land, that would give the Board of Selectmen the authority to do that. So, I move that the town vote to approve the article as read.
Have a motion and a second to approve the article as read. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will open the polls. Polls are...
They're open.
Open. Alright, we will close the polls. Seventy-seven to fourteen, the article passes.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, before we go on to the next few articles, can I do a brief explanation of all of them as a whole?
Sure.
Alright. So, the next five or six or seven articles have to deal with marijuana. Our goal with all of these articles was to prohibit retail sales in the town and then to allow all of their recreational uses to be allowed by special permit in the industrial zones within town. So, this doesn't affect our medical marijuana bylaws that are currently in place. And in order to do this, we have Article eleven, which is a general bylaw, which will prohibit it, but then we also have to pass a zoning bylaw, which is, I believe, Article fourteen, which is going to approve that. So, yes, like I just said, there are two sections. Article eleven is the general. Article... Article twelve would have been a licensing process for recreational marijuana. We're actually going to pass that over tonight, and I'll explain that in a bit. Article thirteen is to extend the medical, sorry, to extend the moratorium on retail sales of recreational marijuana. So, if Article eleven passes tonight, it also has to pass at a ballot. So, the next town election is not until May. So, we put on here that the moratorium would be extended until next June. So, that would give us an opportunity to have the election. And then if the election were to fail, that would still give us approximately a month and a half to develop bylaws to deal with, to create a zoning law, bylaw to deal with retail sales. Sorry, this is a little hard to see. Yeah, so, open. Yeah, so, Articles fourteen and fifteen will allow, by special permit, other marijuana uses in the industrial districts. And Article sixteen just defines those other medical, sorry, the other marijuana uses, and we're just copying what the state has used as that definitions. And Article seventeen is just to adjust the language for the industrial district to include those first special permits that we'd be bringing in Articles sixteen. So, this map is a little bit difficult to see, but this is how, this is our zoning map. So, we're currently suggesting that we prohibit all retail sales. As an alternative, you could allow it into certain zones for, in the business zones, V four, V five. But if you look at the map, kind of that brown color is our... Oh, sorry. So, the brown color is our business four district. So, that's most of Main Street, well, basically all of Main Street, all the way to downtown, and includes the intersection with the Price Shopper. It also includes portions of Thompson Road. The white color is V five, so that's very similar. So, if we were, if we wanted to have a discussion about allowing retail sales in there, we'd want to have an overlay district, because I don't think the town wants to allow it in those brown and white zones, because that would, I think we'd want to restrict that. So, today, we're suggesting that we prohibit it altogether. If that is denied, we would have to come back, and we want to suggest an overlay so we can specify exactly where those districts are going to be. So, what if Article eleven fails, and there is a, we do not ban retailers, that we would skip over Article fifteen, which is the zoning bylaw that bans retail? And if, at that point, we'd have to come back, we review all these articles, and we'd have to put in another zoning regulation and overlay for it. If it does pass, then we would need an overlay, sorry, then we would need to have a ballot election in May. If the election were to fail, then we would have to hold a special town meeting in May or June of next year. So, that's, that in a nutshell. These are the list of all the, we're going to cover dealing with marijuana. So, we'll start with the first one, which is the provision of retail sales in our restaurant.
So, Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to amend the town-
I have a second to read the article.
Have a motion and a second to dispense the reading of the article. I'll just take a voice vote. All those in favor of dispensing the reading of the article, say aye. All those opposed, Virginia unspoke. I will tell you that I have a report here from the bylaw committee that they voted to make no recommendation for changes to the wording of the bylaw, and that they recommended that it be numbered as four fifty-two. That's all I have for their report.
So, Mr. Moderator, there's a, it could be a lot of discussion on this. I think there's one argument for allowing retail sales in the town, and that would be an additional revenue source. So, we could tax out of the three percent. I am actually recommending that we prohibit retail sales in town. I think the reasons for outweigh the additional money that would come in. There's public safety concerns, there's traffic congestion, increased accessibility to vulnerable populations, so it could be a lot more available to children. And then also has a tendency to downgrade the commercial areas that retail dispensaries are located in. So, that's, with that, I would make a motion that the town vote to approve the article as read or as presented.
Have a motion and a second to approve the article as read or, are we doing it as read or presented?
As presented, because we don't read it.
As presented, okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I think on law, both Clay and Ab. First of all, I want to just state that the Finance Committee voted to not recommend this article. As a private citizen, I want to point out that I know for a fact that in Oxford, Massachusetts, the town has given the state the okay to allow a license to be given to a business on Main Street, which is ten minutes down the road from here. Now, we're looking at the estimates, three hundred thousand dollars of potential tax revenue from this. I think that might be low. We are the first exit off of three ninety-five for Connecticut coming in here. We think that people are not going to leave this town to drive ten minutes to go to Oxford to buy marijuana. I think that we're kind of being naive. I think we need to look at the revenue that could come in from this, because I do think that with the highways, people can either stop at exit one or they're going to go until exit four to get into Oxford. I think that people in Webster, if they do want to go and buy marijuana, they're going to get in their car and they're going to drive ten minutes away to downtown Oxford to do it. So, why lose the potential tax revenue to a nearby town? I understand that people might not be for marijuana, or people might not be against marijuana. But I really think we should look at this article as a revenue stream. I see it online all the time. I hear people talk about the need for additional revenues into this town. And I think that by voting no to this article, we're potentially bringing in additional revenue.
Sir, could you just clarify one thing for me, please? I noticed you stated that the FinCon voted not to approve it. Are you speaking entirely as a FinCon member?
No, that was just feeling part of my screen Congress, who is a private citizen.
Okay, thank you.
Just one comment. Mr. Adamopolis said that we have a revenue estimate of three hundred thousand dollars. So, I spoke with the poll voter in town that is going to be running a dispensary in Oxford, and that was his estimate on what potential revenue would be sent down.
Yes, ma'am.
So, guys, we're coming in. Where are you coming up with deciding, really, why do you, are you looking at other towns? Are you coming up with what you assume to our office, or is this from a personal perspective?
As far as why I feel like the town should prohibit retail dispensaries?
Because it's in general all by law. I'm just curious.
Right, so, we spoke with our town council that have been drafting marijuana regulations in many other communities. We told them that we felt that our community would likely vote for a retail ban in town, and so that's what we asked them to draft for us.
And is it not true that you can, though, restrict exactly where they are and also how many there are to the restrictions on, and we're talking about that?
Right, so, the number that's allowed is covered by statute, so it's one percent of the number of licenses. So, essentially, it's two in town, so there could be two retail facilities. It's possible that the town can develop an overlay district that would restrict where it is allowed.
I'm not, I'm just a proponent only in terms of what the income rate is. I'm looking Colorado and seeing what it can lead for small neighbors. I have seen an incredible amount of things that it has done for a small town in Colorado.
Yes, sir. Early, oh, twenty-two Spring Street. I think in addition to the monetary aspect, the revenue for the town, which drastically is needed, the arguments against don't really settle well with me. When you think about marijuana is in town now, and on the underworld side, kids are smoking it now, people, that's where people get their source. And I remind everyone that, like Massachusetts, and like most states in Massachusetts, including Webster, it was in a general election, passed by majority vote. I think the people clearly spoke- I think the people clearly spoke on that. But I think what you're leaving, you know, this marijuana is being controlled very well. And who knows what the kids and adults are getting now and what they're getting? Is it clean? Is it moldy? Does it have, you know, growth or other additives to it? I think that's a disservice to the town. When you know it's around here now, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense in the traffic aspect. I don't, I would like to see the town deal with these aspects. I think you can control signage, you can control a lot of this. I think it's an overreaction to something that's in the changing world. And it's here now, it's not like it's coming into the community. I think the, from what I'm seeing, what you pay in the underworld is going to be what the retail is going to be seeking. So it's not like you're bringing a cheap commodity and that everybody's going to rush to town. I just don't see that the argument's there.
Any additional discussion? Yes, sir.
I'm interested in, I think I'm hearing that we're pushing this off, and eventually it's going to pass.
No, that's not true. So tonight, if this were, this article were to pass, we would be prohibiting retail dispensaries in town for the foreseeable future. We'd have to come back to town meeting and amend the bylaw and the zoning bylaw to allow it in the future.
But that may occur.
That could occur.
Any additional discussion?
Paul Framboy is too big to grasp. This, somebody mentioned that cannabis is being controlled well. It's really not what happened with the cannabis control commission. Put all these small towns in a very precarious position, because nobody could outline what to do with zoning going forward. Zoning can always change, so if we pass this article tonight, all it does is give the town some time. If two years down the road, you want to have distribution here, you can change it. But in the meantime, we don't really know what these ramifications are. It's very hard to create an overlay, an overlay district that would be accurate and be very well done in the timeframe that we've had to do it. So from a planning book, you're going forward, it certainly makes sense to pass this article now. If you want to change it, and have distribution here later, once everybody understands it, then you can come back and change it. But to say that marijuana right now is being controlled well is really a bad statement. So I think that this article should pass the way it is. If you want to change it later on for a revenue stream, I have no problem with that. I'm not against marijuana. I'm just against doing this in an absolute fashion that will come back and we'll regret later.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Randy Becker, 77 Bates Point Road, speaking as an individual. I just want a couple of fact checks here. So if we think, and to my esteemed colleagues on the finance committee, if we think it's going to be $300,000, and that's what's coming from Curaleaf, so we divide that by 3%, that's the tax rate. So that's $10 million a year in annual revenue that Curaleaf thinks that they're going to generate from whatever dispenser, retail dispenser we have. So $10 million, I have no idea, honestly, what marijuana sells for. But I'm going to, let's guess, $50, someone was in and spends $50. Or even let's guess that they spend $100. So take $10 million and divide by $100. It's 100,000 trips. Something, something just doesn't make sense. That's a lot of traffic for retail distribution. And the other comment I would have, I guess I would have a request. I would ask the chief or deputy chief, their comment on approving and having a dispensary in town.
So chief, he's not, he's not a town resident? So either we can take a vote if you want him to speak, and get a vote in the town meeting to hear him, or you can speak as the department head in, as a resident.
Good evening. Folks, if, I look around the room and I see most of you at town meetings. I've seen you here in the past as well. If you'll remember, go back several years at this point, when we were talking about bringing a grow facility in here, a lot of you were here at that time. We spoke about, at that time, about if we brought in a grow facility, it would negate going forward, having, having a distribution coming as well. And we were all in favor of that, and to my knowledge, that passed overwhelmingly. Again, we're unique here in Webster. Well, let me rephrase that, we're not unique, but, you know, I look at other towns that are considering this, and they're considering, you know, the money and the revenue that they're going to make. Keep in mind that that revenue is going to change as well. I've been here for my career here, 31 years or so. And during that entire time, you know, again, this isn't a, this, this isn't a debate about whether marijuana is harmful or anything like that. During that time, we have had horrific problems in my 31 years here. I just, I would have to agree that if we allow this, if we vote on this tonight, I don't know what the hurry is. We can do it as time goes. We're not Oxford, we're not Charlton, who's considering doing this. We're Webster. We have serious issues, and we have serious battles that we fight here. You know, I bring this up, and again, I have to say this. You know, I've met a lot of addicts in my time, and they all started, you know, they've all started. No one started shooting heroin, you know, right off the bat. They started by smoking marijuana. I've never met an addict who hasn't done that. I'm not saying every marijuana, anybody who smokes marijuana is going to turn into an addict. I'm not saying that. But there's a common denominator here, that every addict has started with marijuana. It's just a fact. I think by bringing a distribution center in here at this point, let's be patient. We can do it, as Mr. Framboy said, we can do this later. I'm in favor of voting to, going forward, just to halt this at the moment and let's see how things go. Again, that would be my suggestion.
Any additional discussion? All right, hearing no additional discussion, we will open the vote, we'll open the polls. They open, sir? They are open, this is a simple majority vote. One for yes, two for no. All right, we will close the polls. 54 to 48, the article fails. Article 12, there's no report from the bylaw review committee, so it's ruled out of order. We'll move on to 13.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. So, so this is where we get into, you can only make a motion to reconsider if you are on the losing side. So if you made a motion and didn't, voted improperly. Let's say you voted for this, and you want to change your vote. So if somebody voted in the affirmative for yes to pass it, and you did. Okay, and you wanted to vote no? One, correct. Okay, so, let me explain a little bit better. You have to be on the prevailing side and have voted incorrectly to, in order to do the motion to reconsider. It's not just a tool to bring it back up. So if you, somebody voted no on the prevailing side and voted incorrectly, then they can make that motion to redo the vote, because they voted incorrectly.
Okay, they know they voted incorrectly, you know, understand?
Yeah, so, can I?
So, hold on. So if you voted no, and you to allow, to not allow this article, but you meant to vote yes, so if you hit two by accident, and you wanted to vote one, it's, works on the honest, honesty principle here. And you stand up and you say, I would like to reconsider, I voted improperly. And then we will take a vote to reconsider the vote.
Right, and so to be clear, a yes vote was to prohibit retail sales, and no vote would essentially allow the retail sales.
Okay. So again, just to be clear, a no vote defeats the article, allows retail sales. A yes vote allowed the article and prohibited retail sales. So if somebody voted improperly, they can take, go up to the mic and state that, and we will do that, otherwise we will move on. All right, we will move on. Article 13, see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by replacing Chapter 650, 92, temporary moratorium of recreational marijuana establishments to extend the same for marijuana retailers only, or take any other action. A motion to dispensing, and a second to dispensing the reading of the article. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous vote.
Mr. Moderator, so this is particularly important now that we have a few extra months to develop a zoning bylaw and appropriate regulations to address how we're going to deal with retail sales of recreational marijuana. So I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
This is a zoning bylaw, I need a report from the, from the planning board. Planning board voted to approve the article. Any further discussion on the articles? Yes, sir.
Please explain Section 8C, the temporary moratorium. If we adopt that, is it going to exclude the retailers as the funding?
Right, so this will exclude retailers from opening up until June of 2019.
Oh, okay.
Any additional discussion? All right, this is a two-thirds required vote. We will open voting. Voting is open. All right, we will close voting. 68 to 30, no, sorry, yeah, 67, so it's 68%. So it's 67 to, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah.
32, so it passes. Article 14, this is also a two-thirds required vote. To see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster's zoning bylaw by amending Chapter 650, Attachment 1, Table of Use Regulations, which prohibit recreational marijuana retailers as defined in General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, and the town of Webster, into amendment definition section or take any action relative thereto as follows.
So, Mr. Moderator, this would be the zoning bylaw that would prohibit retail sales in town. So to be consistent with Article 11, we either pass this over, or we take another vote. So, yeah, so we, I mean, essentially, we should pass it over, because we already voted to prohibit retail.
So you're making the motion to pass over?
I will make the motion to pass over.
All right, there's a motion to pass over, and a second, any discussion?
Uh, I'd have to change this rule, unless we just understand that we're passing over.
I'll do a voice vote, real quick. All those in favor of passing over, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it's unanimous vote.
We're done now.
You're getting faster. All right, Article 15, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster's zoning bylaws by amending Chapter 650, Attachment 1, Table of Use Regulations, which would allow marijuana establishments excluding marijuana retailers as defined in General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1, and the town of Webster, by special permit, or take any other action relative thereto, as follows. And this is also a two-thirds required.
Right, so this is all the other marijuana uses, the foundation, licensing, and laboratories, things like that. So we are proposing that they all be allowed in industrial zones by a special permit from the planning board. So I will make the motion that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
A motion, and an article, a motion, a second, to approve the article as presented. I need a report from anyone, please. Planning board voted to approve the article. Any additional discussion on the article? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion to pass over for more information, since we'll be dealing with this in the coming months, you know, for spring.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, can I adjust that?
So, well, there's no second, you have to vote. I'm sorry? So, all right, then now there's a motion and a second to pass over.
Right, so I would recommend that we do pass this article. It does not address retail facilities, but we would, at a future town meeting, address it by adding in language for retail facility. But I think it's important right now that we address this, so that other uses, there is some control over those other uses. If not, then it would be available anywhere.
So you're going to need to amend this line, because of the motion, a second to pass over.
Yeah, so.
Any further discussion on passing over this article?
Mr. Moderator, was that pass over for more information?
Sir, was it pass over, it's, all right, yeah, I apologize, pass over for more information.
Pollings now open.
All right, so if you want to pass this article over for more information, press one. If you do not, press two, polls are open.
Two. Can we verify what the yes and no means?
What, hold on, what would you like to say, sir?
Uh, well, first of all, we're voting on it.
We're voting on to pass over for more information. So if you pass over for more information, we will take no action on this article, and it will have to come up again at another town meeting. To vote no brings us back to the original article as presented on the paper.
As discussion for the pass over, if we do pass this over, we're going to have to have another special town meeting, because the more important the time, the sooner it will be. We have to pass something before that. So we're going to, we'll mail free, show the county, so.
So if everybody heard him, he states that the launch term will expire, and you would need to have a special town meeting. I'm just asking clarification from town council, if that information is 100% correct.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Jeffrey Blake, and I'm from KP Law, your town council. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I believe what the speaker said was true, that if this doesn't pass, then we don't appear to have regulations with respect to the table of uses for marijuana cultivators, craft marijuana cooperatives, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana testing laboratories, marijuana establishment as an accessory use. So to the extent that those do want to be regulated, and we don't, if we pass over this article, then yes, we would have to come back at some point to do this.
Right, so the moratorium that we just passed was only for retail?
Yes. Okay, just fixing the mic, okay. Any further discussion? All right, hearing no further discussion, we're voting. All right, hearing no further discussion, we're voting on the motion to pass over. Again, a yes vote passes over this article, so it would have to come up at a later date and time. A no vote just brings us back to discuss the original article. And the polls are open. All right, we will close the polls. All right, so the motion to pass over fails, sixty-eight to thirty-six. All right, now we're back to the original article as presented. Any further discussion on the original article? Yes, ma'am, we're voting on article 15 as presented in the, in the thing. Unless anybody has any further discussion that would like to hear on this.
Does anyone need clarification on what that's meaning?
Okay, so we will open voting?
One minute.
It is not yet open. It is now open? One for yes, two for no. All right, this is a two-thirds required vote, we will close voting. Eighty percent to twenty percent, so seventy-six to nineteen, the article passes. All right, I apologize, we have to, so I'm going to ask someone that voted to pass article 13 to make a motion to reconsider. The reason being is that there is improper language in there as just identified by town council. The improper language states that the prohibitive bylaw requires a valid measure to be, to be valid. And that ratified, it's prohibitive bylaws for a local valid measure as required by chapter 94G, which is not correct language, the language needs to be amended.
Right, because we're no longer having the moratorium to wait for the election. Now the moratorium is to allow us more time to develop regulations to deal with retail.
So I have a motion to reconsider. You voted in the affirmative, correct? You did. Have a second? I have a motion and a second to do reconsideration. So this is going to require the two, two-thirds for the reconsideration. Although, any discussion on the reconsideration? This is article 13 due to improper language that was in the published document. So we'll amend that language.
It was originally correct.
So is that clear to everybody? I want to make sure that it's clear on that. Because of incorrect language in article 13, there is a motion to reconsider so that we can present it with the correct language and re-vote on it. Hearing no further discussion on that then. All those in favor of voting to reconsider article 13, please? It's a two-thirds vote, so I need to have numbers unless it was unanimous, which?
Oh, so they want us to reconsider?
Yes. All right, so let me try it in reverse, hold on, this is, Mr. Moderator, this is the time to be straight. I'll try it. All those in favor of voting to reconsider article 13, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's just one no, okay. So I'll use my prerogative, which the law allows me to do, to say that it's two-thirds or above. Okay, so now we'll go to the original article.
Yeah. I'll read it. All right, so, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I hope everyone can follow this. So article 13, if everyone turns to page 14 in the town meeting guide, that would probably help us. Okay, so I am going to amend section eight, part A, the purpose. So if we move down to the bottom, it's four lines from the bottom. Currently it says, "The prohibitive bylaws require a valid measure to be valid." So the, we're no longer doing it because there's no need for a valid measure. So we're going to delete that sentence. But we're going to move down to the last line and it says, "Consequently, the town intends to adopt a temporary moratorium on the use of land or structures in the town for marijuana retailers for rent the town to..." Instead of the rest of the sentence, I'm going to amend it, delete that, and amend it to say, "Enact bylaws to address the retail sale of marijuana." So that is the amendment of section eight, part A. And then I will also amend section eight, part C. So the last sentence says, "During the moratorium, the town shall..." From that point on, we will delete the rest of the sentence and it shall be, "Prepare additional bylaws to regulate the retail sale of marijuana." Any questions?
So can you repeat for me because I didn't get it all? Additional bylaws to?
All right, the last one?
Yeah, additional bylaws.
Bylaws to regulate the retail sale of marijuana.
I'm going to read it all, just so everybody's clear. Section eight, we'll now read, "By vote at the state election on November 8, 2016..." And Mr. Thomas, if I get any of it wrong, we know. "...the voters of the Commonwealth approved a law and act entitled the Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, regulating the regulation of the use and distribution of marijuana not medically prescribed as amended by chapter 351 of the Acts of 2016 and chapter 55 of the Acts of 2017, codified in general laws, chapter 94G, the Act, regulating the control, reduction, and distribution of marijuana under a system of licenses and regulations. The town has proposed general and zoning bylaw amendments to prohibit marijuana retailers in the town of Webster. These bylaws and a companion bylaw allowing other types of marijuana establishments, including cultivators, product manufacturers, and testing facilities, is being presented at the town meeting concurrently with this moratorium. Consequently, the town intends to adopt a temporary moratorium on the use of land and structures in the town for marijuana retailers to commit the town to enact bylaws to address retail sales of marijuana. Definitions, one, all terms herein shall have the meaning set forth in the Act. Section C, temporary moratorium, for the reasons set forth above and notwithstanding any other provisions of the zoning bylaw, to the contrary, the town hereby adopts a temporary moratorium on the use of land or structures for marijuana retailers as defined by the Act, which shall not include medical marijuana treatment centers, marijuana cultivators, marijuana product manufacturers, or marijuana testing facilities. No building permit, special permit, variance, site plan, or other permit may be issued under this zoning bylaw for the purpose of establishing marijuana retailers. The moratorium shall remain in effect through June 15, 2019. During the moratorium, moratorium period, the town shall prepare additional bylaws to regulate the retail sales of marijuana." Okay, give me one second. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the article as read, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, and part A, purpose. It says the town has proposed general and zoning bylaws amendments to prohibit marijuana retailers in the town of Webster. Does that conflict with our vote on article 11?
Well, we never know.
Town council says it does not conflict.
Me too.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, this is a two, two-thirds, we, yeah, yes. Yes, sir.
Al Condon, United Church of Holland Road. Would you ask the town attorney to explain why there's no conflict there?
Yes, sir.
This is Jeff Blake again. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I believe there's no conflict because they did propose it. And the fact was that you didn't, you didn't approve it, but you certainly proposed it, so I don't believe that there's a conflict.
Any additional discussion? Okay, hearing no additional discussion, we will open up the polls. Again, this is a two-thirds required vote. A yes vote will approve the article as read, a no vote will, as amended and as well as, as I read it, amended as I read it, and a no vote will not, not pass it. The voting is open. One for yes, two for no. All right, we will close voting. Sixty-six to thirty-four, two-thirds. Sixty-five to thirty. Even though the system said no, it does not. It should be sixty-six.
So maybe what's in that?
No, so it's rounding up, the system is rounding up, but it should be double.
It, yeah, it fails, it needs to be, we can't have a rounded, rounded percentage. So the article fails. Okay. Now we are back to article 16. Article 16, see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster's zoning bylaws by amending the footnotes in chapter 650.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Article, I just want some clarification from town council. Does the bylaw now not, is it not, I guess, a valid bylaw because there's wording in there that's not correct? Certain vote that's not going to take place?
Which bylaw is that?
The one that we just voted on? I mean, I understand it failed, but it passed from a previous vote, the first one. The wording, it's not correct, is there going to be an issue?
We did a reconsideration. We, it was amended and now it fails. So it's, the article fails. There is no moratorium at the moment, that is correct. All right, article 16, see if the town will vote, see if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster's zoning bylaws by amending the footnotes in chapter 650, attachment one, table of use regulations, to define marijuana-related terms or take any other action relative thereto as follows. Terms shall have the definition established for national laws, chapter 94G, section one.
So to clarify this article, so in 15, we approved zoning regulations for those different marijuana uses. All we're doing is defining those different marijuana uses by adopting the national law definitions.
All right, this is a two-thirds required vote and I need a planning board vote.
Planning board voted to approve the article.
The planning board voted to approve the article. So we have a motion and a second and a report, any further discussion? All right, hearing no further discussion, we will open voting. It's open? And it's open. All those in favor, one, all those opposed, two. This is a two-thirds required vote. All right, we will close voting. Eighty-seven to fourteen, the article passes. Article seventeen, this is also a two-thirds required vote. See if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster's zoning bylaws by amending chapter 650, section 20B, by adding new subsections to permit marijuana cultivators, product manufacturers.
Dispersed with the reading of the article.
I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the article. I have a second, any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? See unanimous vote. All right, now we're going on to the article.
Right, so a brief explanation, this would adjust our special permit section to address the new marijuana uses such as cultivation and craft growers, things like that. So it will require them to have appropriate ventilation system and also appropriate security system amongst some other things. But I move that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve the article as presented. This is a two-thirds required vote, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Is there any reason why on the fourth line down, we can't just exclude? I'd like to make a motion to exclude the term except marijuana retailers and just leave that out?
Give me one second.
It's pretty explanatory the way it's written about that terminology.
No, it would not be outside the scope to do that, so if you'd like to make that motion, you may make that motion. All right, there's a motion to amend the article by excluding except marijuana retailers in the fourth line down. Is there a second? I have a motion and a second to amend the article by removing except marijuana retailers in the fourth line, any discussion?
Somebody explain what it means?
So it's article seventeen, the first paragraph, fourth line down, except marijuana retailers. So it would read, "See if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster's zoning bylaws by amending chapter 650, 20B, by adding new subsections to permit marijuana cultivators, product manufacturers, product manufacturers, testing laboratories, and craft marijuana cooperatives by special permit in the industrial zone, and to oppose additional special regulations to said marijuana establishments, the sections to eat and after take any action relative thereto as follows." So we move.
But what does it mean if we exclude marijuana retailers from retail? How does that affect the town? If we exclude marijuana retailers, can someone explain?
No, 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 that's not the same. He said take out except marijuana. So because we have said that we're not guilty, they're not?
No, can you just step up the microphone if you're?
So the question is, what does it mean? It means that the bylaw is not applicable to marijuana retailers.
So. I understand it would exclude marijuana retailers out of the language, but what does that allow marijuana retailers to do?
So town council just informed me that it doesn't apply to marijuana retailers anyways, even with the wording. So it doesn't change it by taking it out, that's what he was trying to say.
So again, we're going to have to come back to town meeting and adjust all of these bylaws to add retail as a different option to the statute.
I want town council to point it to.
Good evening, through you, Mr. Moderator. To your question, what does that do to marijuana retailers? And I don't mean to be flip, but it doesn't regulate marijuana. It is exactly what it sounds like. Marijuana retailers are not regulated in this particular bylaw here. And I think the reason being is, as you know, on article, what was it, 11, where we thought we were going to prohibit them, a lot of these bylaws were written with it in mind that we were actually going to pass article 11. That's why when we did the moratorium, we have that language in there that, that made it... Once we didn't have the moratorium, it made, it made it, the, the language, I spiked that. Once we didn't prohibit retailers, it made the language, I don't want to say wrong, but just not applicable in this instance, the same thing here. It will not regulate the marijuana retailers, so the marijuana retailers will not be subject to this particular section of the bylaw.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I just want to point out that article 15 is pretty much the same thing as article 17, and article 15 doesn't have the retail marijuana on it, inserting a special permit in the industrial zone. So they, they...
the special permit in the industrial zone, so they, they would kind of match up.
Right, they're consistent.
Can you explain?
So basically Article fifteen doesn't, is moved, is moved to retail and seventeen is in one.
So you've got the end used. Yes, sir.
Alcottin 902, Treasure Island Road.
So fifteen, seventeen both don't regulate retail dispensaries at all.
Given the amount of confusion that has just contributed itself here in these last few
But they're regulating different aspects of it?
No, so they are regulating marijuana cultivators, craft cultivator cooperatives,
articles, is there any way to reconsider Article eleven?
marijuana product manufacturers, and marijuana independent testing laboratories.
Because I'm sure many people have voted in Article eleven or not clear on what they're
Give me one second.
voting for.
So you, you could do that, you can't do that at the moment because we're in discussion So town council tells me that they are not applicable, they complement each other, of this article. You could do that in later, afterwards, before we start the next article, but it would have to be somebody that voted in the affirmative for that article, so when they say affirmative from the side that, that prevailed. Which was the no side. Yes, sir. and they don't do the marijuana retail on businesses. You'd like to withdraw your motion? It was allowed.
Do you approve it in both articles? I don't think it should be in either article except retail sales. Why have it an article we already passed and the voting that you're...
Alright, so he has made a motion to remove his article, all those, we'll just do it by voice vote. All those in favor of allowing him to remove his motion to amend the article, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous vote, we're back to the original wording of the article. Which puts except marijuana retailers back in that language. Do we have any further discussion on this? Alright, we have no further discussion on this, we will open, open the voting to vote on the article as presented. It is a two-thirds required vote.
It's open.
It is open. Alright, we will close voting. Eighty to nineteen, the article passes.
Your question, there are...
Yes, ma'am.
When did it change that people could not ask for reconsideration of an article during a town meeting?
That they can ask for reconsideration.
So we get seven people to stand and say?
No, that's to doubt the vote. An article for reconsider, so to reconsider the vote per town meeting time, you have to have voted on the side that prevailed, so in Article eleven, that would be the no side.
Alright, so five voted the no.
And then you can make that article, you can make that article, so we did do some reconsiderations, but it has to be on the, on the no side, but it was, we had debate going on, and so you can't do the reconsideration of another article in the middle of the debate.
No, no, I understand that, but I thought if seven people stood...
That's to doubt the vote, so if you doubt the vote of the moderator, seven people could stand, and then we would do a roll call vote, where either everyone would stand up and we would vote. The electronic voting kind of eliminates that, that was pretty much for the voice vote, if you doubted my decision on the voice vote, you would do, you would, seven people would stand, and then we would do a roll call vote at that point in time by having...
I thought that was if people wanted to reconsider, not the way it was voted, but if people wanted to reconsider a, an article, it would be brought up again for rediscussion. Alright, thank you.
You're on.
I voted no, I think we should leave them on a legend, please.
But I think we should speak it in English tongue, in simple tongue, what this is.
Ma'am, if you could go to the microphone, please tell me your name and address. Thank you.
Tamara Healan, Markham, seven, Markham.
So what is it you would like to do, ma'am?
I'd like to reconsider Article eleven, please.
Okay, and so you voted a no.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so this is a two-thirds required vote. It's a, so the reconsideration requires a two-thirds required vote. Do I have a second for the reconsideration? I have a motion and a second to reconsider Article eleven. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will go back to Article eleven and we will vote to vote to reconsider it.
So right now, it's just a vote to reconsider.
Okay, so we, to answer your question, ma'am, we are going, this is a motion to reconsider the original vote on Article eleven. Article eleven was defeated, so the no votes prevailed. This, if we vote, people that voted the affirmative now, will bring back for discussion and revote Article eleven. If you're satisfied with the vote on Article eleven as it was originally held, you just vote no, and there will be no going back to Article eleven. Is that clear for everybody? Okay, and it's a two-thirds required vote to go back on the reconsideration. Any discussion? Alright, so when I, is the voting open?
It is.
Alright, voting is open, so one for yes, if you want to go back and reconsider Article eleven, two for no, if you don't. Alright, we will close voting. So it does not pass because it required two-thirds vote, so it was forty-eight to sixty-one.
So the vote stands on?
The vote stands on Article eleven as it was originally defeated. We're now back to Article eighteen. Alright, Article eighteen, see if the town will vote to authorize the board of select to acquire by gift, purchase, or otherwise, two certain parcels of land located at forty-six Main Street and thirty-eight Main Street, being shown on assessors map one, block X, parcels ten and nine, and describe... A motion, dispense with the reading, and I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous vote? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, I'm glad the town passed over this article. Originally, this was put on there because we were hoping to receive brand funding from the state to assist with the cleanup of the, these two parcels that were destroyed by the tornado and torn down that day. So that money did not come through, so there is no way to purchase property, so we recommend we pass over the article. Brief update, Mass D E P emailed me today, they said that the cleanup was approved for those two parcels, so that should be happening shortly.
I have a motion and a second to pass over this article, any discussion? Alright, hearing no discussion, we will open up voting. All those in favor of passing over the article, please press one. All those opposed, please press two. Alright, we will close voting. One hundred and two to three, the article is passed over. Article nineteen, this is also a two-thirds required vote. See if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster zoning map referenced in section six fifty, dash thirteen, at the town, the town? Motion, dispense with the reading, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous vote? Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Moderator, this article will change the, in the box, it's hard to see, the little red box there, above the B four, that will change that to B four zoning, currently it's full-time family residential. Put this in perspective, where the B four is, is where the new family and adult daycare facility just opened up. So I will make a motion that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
A motion and a second and discussion, I'll take a report from the planning board.
Planning board voted to approve the article.
Planning board voted to approve the article, okay. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing no further discussion, we will open up voting. All those in favor of passing over the article, please press one. All those opposed, please press two. Alright, we will close voting. One hundred and two to three, the article is passed over. Article nineteen, this is also a two-thirds required vote. See if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster zoning map referenced in section six fifty, dash thirteen, at the town, the town? Motion, dispense with the reading, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous vote? Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Moderator, this article will change the, in the box, it's hard to see, the little red box there, above the B four, that will change that to B four zoning, currently it's full-time family residential. Put this in perspective, where the B four is, is where the new family and adult daycare facility just opened up. So I will make a motion that the town vote to approve the article as presented.
A motion and a second and discussion, I'll take a report from the planning board.
Planning board voted to approve the article.
Planning board voted to approve the article, okay. Any further discussion? Alright, hearing no further discussion, we will open up voting. It is a two-thirds required vote, voting is open. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the screen. I will close voting. Ninety-four to seven, your article's passed. Article twenty, this is also a two-thirds required vote. See if the town will vote to amend the town of Webster zoning use facility bylaws, chapter six fifty, by amending section ninety-one, C three, or take any other action. I have a motion and a second, dispense with the reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous vote.
So this article will amend the bylaw by allowing large-scale photovoltaic installations only in the business and industrial districts. So if you look at the map, that would be the brown areas, the orange areas, the white, and that dark purple which is over on the core of that. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Jason Piata, ninety-one, Basepoint Road, I'm the sponsor of the article. First off, to stay perfectly clear, I do not speak as head of the zoning board of appeals, just as a common citizen. Essentially, what this warrant article does is brings the solar bylaws into conformity with the recommendations of Massachusetts Department of N G B resources and current land court case law that specifically states that a town may restrict commercial solar facilities to business and industrial zones and prohibit them from residential zones. And that's all that this article does, as there are a number of large-scale solar facilities that are being proposed in the town of Webster that are specifically located in residential and ordering on conservation lands. Thank you.
Does the planning board have a report on this?
Planning board recommends approval of the article.
Planning board recommends approval of the article. Any further discussion on the article? You, Mr. Tom, have made a motion to?
Yeah, to approve the article.
To approve the article?
As presented.
As presented, okay, there is an article and a second to approve the, there is a motion and a, and a second to approve the article as presented. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Randy Becker, seventy-seven, Basepoint Road. As Mr. Piata had mentioned, there's a lot going on in town in single-family residential with regards to putting up large-scale photovoltaic systems. Well, I think the town has learned a lot since October of 2015, when this town meeting three years ago voted an overlay across the entire town. One of the big things that we have learned is large-scale industrial and commercial really doesn't belong in residence, doesn't belong in conservation either. As it is today, believe it or not, a large-scale solar photovoltaic system could even be put up in a water ditch, if the planning board gave a special permit. So that's one of the reasons I was in agreement to sign as the sponsor for this proposal. So I would urge a voting to approve this particular bylaw. Thank you.
Any additional discussion on the article? Alright, hearing no additional discussion on the article, we will open up voting.
It's open.
Voting is open. All those in favor of passing the article as presented, press one. All those opposed, press two. Two-thirds required vote. Alright, we will close voting. Eighty-three percent, the article passes. Ninety-two to nineteen. Article twenty-one, see if the town will vote to have the board of select petition the state legislature for a special act, or take any other action relative thereto as follows. A motion and a second, dispense with the reading of the article, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous vote?
So, Mr. Moderator, this is a citizen's petition for Waterfront Mary's Restaurant to have a year-round liquor license. Currently, they only have a seasonal license. And I will refer to the response, to the sponsor for any questions, but for discussion purposes, I will move to approve as presented.
I have a motion and a second to approve it as presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we will open up voting. All those in favor of approving the article as read, press one. All those opposed, please press two. Alright, we will close voting. Eighty-four percent, ninety-two to seventy, the article passes. Alright, I will take a motion to adjourn. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, please drop off, can you...